We are meeting in Wetmore, at the Wetmore Community Center. I want to welcome everybody. Courtney, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Couple of good mornings. Counselor, how are you?
I'm fine.
Good morning, sir.
A couple of housekeeping items, real quick. Commissioner Canada is out of state. He hopefully will be joining us by telephone. Our IT director, Vernon Roth, is coming down to try to make that happen. So, he will join us when we, if and when we can get that telephone connection to him. Speaking of Bill Canada, oh gosh. He was just calling me. And if we have to, and I didn't think I'd get reception, but if we have to, for now, we can put him on the speakerphone, so. And Kelly Camper is out on vacation, so the illustrious Ms. Brenda Gady will be serving in her capacity today. Trying to get him called back.
There's a phone in the kitchen?
Yeah, and that's what, he's bringing a long cord down, and we're gonna try, and he's bringing a speakerphone.
Okay. I just thought if you wanted to call him, that works a lot better than cellphone.
Okay. I thought he was right, Vernon was right behind us, so he may have hung up at the...
It wasn't good construction.
They opened the highway, and then now the power company's got it blocked off because they're doing some work on the... Bill wants to know, am I going to call him? Uh, yes. That's the general idea. Good morning, how are you, sir?
Good. You are gonna call me?
Well, yeah, I've been trying to call you. I was making an announcement when you called me, and I looked down and saw that the phone was ringing, and by the time I picked it up, you had disconnected. So, I've got you on speakerphone. Vernon is on his way down to try to get us a regular telephone with speakerphone capability.
Okay.
So, we will...
I thought he was gonna do that in a couple days.
Yeah, they had the road closed, so he decided to wait and come down this morning. So, but you're, you missed the Pledge of Allegiance, but you're right on time for the roll call, so we will conduct that. Ms. Gady, would you conduct the roll call, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Canada.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Present.
Brenda Gady, Deputy Clerk to the Board, present. And County Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Here comes Mr. Vernon right now. So, hello, sir. Take your time, I got him on speakerphone, so we're good for now, but we'd like to go ahead and do the other, because I've only got one bar.
We're lucky we're talking.
That's right, yeah. Any amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
None from me.
Okay.
I would like to add, under unfinished business, if that's the appropriate place to...
Can you speak up a little, sir?
I'm sorry, I'd like to add to unfinished business, if it's appropriate, the continuation of the fire, the discussion of continuing the fire ban.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Counselor, are you okay with that, under unfinished business?
That's fine.
I think that is getting set to expire, so I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
I have nothing else.
Okay. Nor do I. So, we will move on to audience introductions. Would you like to start, ma'am?
Vivian Waffles.
Okay.
Aunt Howard Wetmore.
Kathy West Wetmore.
Margaret Storm, Canyon City.
Janet Elliott Wetmore.
Okay.
Ron LaVar Greenwood.
Okay.
Jackie Buebers for the Sunwell.
Nan Davenport Wetmore.
Courtney Davenport Wetmore.
Josh Farrel Wetmore.
Bruce Farrel Wetmore.
Are you folks new? Have you...
No, we're just friends.
Nancy Crandall Wetmore.
Marjorie White Wetmore.
Hallen Gray Wetmore.
Cindy Flower Westwood.
Mike Martin Wetmore.
Heidi Martin Wetmore.
Hey.
Hope you got enough coffee for everybody today.
No coffee, no donuts, no water, no nothing. This place is going to the dogs down here.
Boy, thank you.
Actually, everything I told you is a bald-faced lie, so...
The coffee's wonderful. Thank you, whoever.
That would probably be...
The trees, the trees are green.
Oh, they are? Because I kinda missed out on all that, so... Yeah, Vernon's here working on the phone, Bill, so we should have you hooked up here shortly.
Okay, I'm standing by.
Okay.
You can go if you want to dial, and there's a speakerphone on this one.
Okay. Let's see, Bill, hold on just a second. So, are we at 9979 number, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna, let's hang up, and I will call you and put you on speakerphone.
Okay, that's great.
All right, thanks. Bye. We can...
That's clear.
Okay, I'm gonna turn your volume up a little. How's that?
Check, check, check. Can you hear me?
Yep. Can you hear us okay?
Excellent. Thank you, Vernon.
Thanks, buddy boy. You gonna stick around, or?
I was, I had to...
You gotta go back. Okay. Hold on just a second, Bill.
I was just gonna say something.
Well, I want to introduce Vernon Roth. He's our IT guru.
Good afternoon, good morning, everyone.
These folks are interested in knowing who you are, because they want to visit with you at some point, particularly Nan Davenport, who is the head library guru down here. So, if you want to take a minute, you have just a couple minutes to step out and visit with her a little, is that all right? Nan, you okay?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Good. You bet. I would be remiss if I didn't mention a couple things, Mr. Canada, since you are not here. Counselor's looking very dapper today. Got a nice emerald green shirt on and a matching tie, so very excited about that.
Glad our influence helps.
Yeah, our influence is slowly rubbing off. He's not looking real impressed down there, I can tell you that.
I don't appreciate just being eye candy for the crowd.
No, yeah. He's feeling like eye candy, see, so, yeah. And then I would also be remiss if I did not make public notice of the fact that we have a grand champion county fair entry winner with us today, who displayed a needlepoint, I believe.
Embroidered.
Embroidered rendition of De Naus Plexipus, commonly known as the monarch butterfly, and she was the grand champion in the whatever category that happened to fit in. So, there we go. Jackie Buebers is who I'm talking about, so...
Congratulations.
Yep. I went and looked at it yesterday, and you had actually had the name written in there in Latin, and I could barely read it, but I read enough to, and I thought, oh, I've got to run that by Jackie to let her know I know my Latin. And then, when I did this morning, she said, what in the world are you talking about? So, anyway, enough of that. Approval of the minutes, July 29th, June 5, and June 6.
I've read those, I thought they were comprehensive and complete. I'd like to move that we approve the minutes.
Okay.
Oh, Becca didn't, I read them.
All right, good. As did I. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from June 29, July 5, and July 6. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose may, motion carries. Minutes of July, June 29, July 5, July 6, stand approved as presented. Commissioner items. Commissioner Canada.
I got a few, real quick, items, I'll make it short. I did talk with Veronica Bogan, she's with BLM, really specialist.
Okay, hold on just a second. Let me get your volume turned up a little. Go ahead, Veronica.
Yeah, I talked to, can you hear me? Check, check.
Yeah. I got the volume apparently up all the way, so, go ahead.
Was your phone louder?
No.
Okay.
And it probably is a little dicey, so it could cut out on us anytime, but give us the name again, Bill.
I'll make it short, and I'll make it, I'll talk slower, so you can hear, and then we'll go from there. I talked with Veronica Bogan of the BLM about our proposed land swap on Lookout Mountain.
Okay.
And I have a point of contact from her, that he deals with the exchanges for the BLM. He's the field manager at the Royal Gorge Field Office, so I'll work with him to get our application and do that, as well as an application that we can work now. She claims it will take quite a bit of time to run it through the bureaucracy, so who knows what that means. But she said, in the meantime, we can deal with the trails, if we want to develop a trail up to the tower, like we had proposed, and put a picnic area in up there, a point of interest for the Colorado Trails or the Custer County Trails Program. So, I will also get that application going. Also, worked on the airport as well. They did complete the testing. They don't have all details yet until we have a survey done for the departure end, but it appears that the runway is more than adequate to support the Montix Ranch aircraft. And so, we will be dealing, I will get ahold of the owner, as well as the point of contact for them, and we will work the next step. And I'll do that tomorrow. It's very good news, and they're also getting us a list of aircraft that are gonna be able, you know, weight categories that will be sustained by our running. The only concern, if not a real concern, is down the road, based on the age of the concrete, we may be faced with another coat of asphalt down there, so that's something for the airport board. I'll be talking with them, plan in our future budgets. Additionally, I worked with the Justice Center as well, and I did finally get ahold of Dick Elsner of Park County, who had gone through a county building acquisition, that we want to get, let them learn, good and bad, from. So, he is working with his county manager and a couple other people to come down and give us presentations. They may not be able to do it when we have our Justice Center meeting, but I'll let you know, I'll figure out when a best schedule would be, that may be separate to our normal Justice Center committee meeting. And then, last but not least, we're just working the EGA Justice Center property lease to purchase, and I've been working with Clint, he'll have a couple words on that as well, but everything's pulling together, coming together nicely on that, I think. That's all I have for now.
Okay. You mentioned the land swap at Lookout Mountain. What land are we swapping? What's the proposal?
That's, I've recorded several meetings ago, Tom. This is five acres, I had kitsch, I look at that, as well as there's land up on borders of BLM north of Silver Cliff, that borders the open range area right there. They said that would be a good one to propose. That's what we've been discussing in the past.
So, five acres...
For five acres.
Near the BLM and Silver Cliff?
On the north side of 96, on the east side of the, the Oak Creek Grade Road.
On the east side of Oak Creek Grade, 255, east side, okay.
Right against their BLM land that they have.
Okay. Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Commissioner Prince, would you like to?
Sure. We had our housing study meeting down in Canyon with the upper Arkansas Council governments. We met with the company that will be conducting the housing study, the three counties that are participating in a role present, and we had good discussion as to how we're gonna move. They had extreme interest in the Silver Cliff Small House Village. I want to call it Tiny House Village, but I don't want to be derogatory, although I know that's the term for it.
Interesting.
Yeah, so, I went and took a bunch of pictures of that, and sent it on to the company that's conducting the investigation, and he sent it on, or is sending it on, to the other counties. What they really like about it is how clean it is. There's a little park in that little village, there's pathways. I mean, it's just a beautiful, Silver Cliff did just an absolutely wonderful job with that, and it looks like it could be a model for more affordable housing. What we're talking about is attainable housing, so that people who are coming to Custer County can afford to, usually it's people who are starting out working, can afford to rent, or rent to purchase, or purchase a house with a lower income as they're starting out their careers. It helps us entice people to come to work in Custer County. This is not Section 8 housing, this is not taking people from under a bridge and bringing them up here. This is simply to allow workers to find a place to affordably live. So, I just wanted to give you a little update on what that's about. Yes, ma'am?
Good question. Silver Cliff owns that? I thought that was privately owned.
It's, it's in Silver Cliff.
Okay. Because you said Silver Cliff did such a nice job, but it was my understanding that that whole area is privately owned. Is that correct?
It is privately owned, but Silver Cliff obviously oversaw that, and they met all the codes and all that stuff. The private owner did a wonderful job.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no problem.
I just was confused.
No, that's okay. I appreciate that. I probably didn't say it right. I also met with the Custer County Kids Council, that's moving along, funds are coming in. Yesterday, we met with the Custer County Emergency Committee to discuss the debriefing of our fires and other disasters that have occurred. I came down on Sunday to try and see if I could just lend moral support while you folks were going through your disaster. Unfortunately, I was stopped incorrectly so, and turned back, because I'm not a first responder, but I'm just very, very pleased that no lives were lost, and hopefully the property damage is minimal, so I'm really pleased about that. Let's see. I've continued to work with the tri-counties on the district attorney issue, on the pricing that we're gonna have in our budget for 2019. The three counties are working with the district attorney. Actually, we haven't worked with the district attorney yet, we're getting ready to get a letter to the district attorney, asking the district attorney to explain the budget. We want some transparency, we want to know where the money's going and coming from. Our expense to that, our Custer County's expense is very high, as everybody else is, it's well in excess of $115,000 a year. So, we all feel, we being the three counties, feel that we need some accountability for that money. Where's it going? Where's it coming from? Well, we know where it's coming from, but where's it going? How are you spending it? Last year, we were told they wanted a 3% raise next year, two years out, and we figured, how can you possibly know that, what you're gonna need? I mean, maybe you need more, maybe you need less, but anyway, we're trying to get some accountability for that. Lots of other small things that I've worked on, but nothing of consequence that needs to really be reported at this moment, so I think I'll kind of just stop there.
All right.
But if I can ask a question, if I may?
Certainly.
Has, have we had any, this is, to the best of my knowledge, the really first big rain we've had down here? Have we had any leakage, or did that sub-pump that we put in work? Wonderful. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Just a quick rundown of my calendar, what I've been doing since our last meeting. July 7, we conducted our annual weed tour up in the valley. We had about 15 people that attended that, so felt like that really went well. We had a lunch afterwards, and went out and looked at some noxious weeds. We had to search to find them, but we did find, well, three or four different populations of noxious weeds up there, but again, it was, it was a huntin', huntin' look. We did find some napweed, the, obviously the county's aware of that, as well as Forest Service, it's on county right-of-way land, and I think we'll work with the Forest Service in dealing with that. Bouncing bet, do you guys know bouncing bet, anybody? It's a noxious weed, it was introduced from Europe as a ornamental flower, and it was brought into the valley and planted as a cultivar, and so we have one little family of bouncing bet.
Sounds awful cute.
It is kind of cute. It's got a very nice-looking flower on it, which is why they planted it, but it's a noxious weed, and so we're gonna leave it where it is, because I think it's the only bouncing bet in the county. And if it wants to decide to migrate somewhere, we'll probably take care of that approach, but yeah, so. But anyway, we had a great time with that weed tour, and Brenda helped me coordinate and facilitate that, so I want to thank you for your help on that. Counselor was, is on our weed tour, but you were unable to attend, correct?
I'm on the weed board.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the weed board, but yeah.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't make it.
Yeah, to the weed tour. So, sometime we may just take that whole committee, and we'll go look at those.
Well, I'd, I'd like to see bouncing bet.
I'm, I thought maybe, you probably are holding your breath, aren't you? I've never seen it, to be honest with you, I'd never heard of it, till I got to looking at the A-list on our state weed list, and I thought, hmm. But once you see it, especially when it's in the flowering stage, very easy to identify that plant, it's got a very unique flower. So, then we had, of course, our monthly Republican Central Committee meeting, attended that. July 11, we had a tower intergovernmental agreement meeting in the commissioner room, attended that with all the appropriate people that are involved in those towers up there. We're writing an agreement to make sure all the parties are on the same page, as far as splitting the cost of the repair, maintenance, and that kind of stuff, so. July 12, I attended the upper Arkansas Weed Management Meeting down in Canyon City. That was my first opportunity to meet with those folks, they were tickled that I was there. I never did get the gentleman's title, I had to leave before the meeting was over, so I didn't get to talk to him afterwards, but he is a big muckymuck with the Colorado Department of Ag, in, in, in charge of noxious weeds in Colorado, so we had an opportunity to visit with him, and that cooperative group, that whole management group, has been a little unhappy with Colorado Department of Agriculture's failure to make it as easy as possible to control noxious weeds, and so we kind of gave him the business about that, and he said he would definitely speak with the folks in his office, and we're just having trouble getting our grants approved, not necessarily approved, but the whole grant process has just been a nightmare, so he, he said they would work on that. So, that was good. And then that afternoon, I attended the upper Arkansas Water Conservation District meeting in Salida, their monthly meeting, and so things are moving forward with that group. And then on the July 13, I met with George Maderas, the manager for Round Mountain Water and Sanitation District, had a good visit with him, clearing up some information about the substantial water leak that occurred at the Saddle Club. That leak happened to be metered through the county-owned meter for Roden Bridge. Roden Bridge has paid that bill, but I wanted to make sure we had all the facts and figures, because that's on the agenda for the 31st meeting, and so I met with him for about an hour and a half, and so that was good. July 16, I came down and toured the South Heart Scrabble Creek flood damage. Bill Donnelly took me up through that canyon, I'd never been up there before, County Road 386. Part of County Road 386 is still intact, it's sustained about another 100 yards of complete devastation below where the road had been washed out before. I, you guys are probably way more familiar with that country than I am, but there's, in my estimate, I haven't asked anybody, looked like about a 50 pair of phone cable running up underneath that road, all the way to Highway 160, and that phone line had been exposed on the prior flooding event last year. This year, it is, it's torn apart. So, there's, wherever that was providing phone service, obviously doesn't have phone service, because I looked at one of the ends of the cable that had been torn out and was laying out, kind of in rubble, wrapped around a tree, and so I don't know what's gonna happen with that. Sentry links. I would be very surprised if they're gonna be willing to do anything with that phone line until somebody's willing to do something with that county road, and I just don't see that happening, it's...
I think they've told us several times that they really have no intention of even rebuilding the road.
That's correct. The last time we talked with Forest Service, they said, no, that's probably not gonna happen, so...
So, it's worse now, I'm sure.
Yes, so...
Have we heard of anybody with phone outages?
I have not. Bill Donnelly explained to me who he thought was probably affected by that line, but I'm not talking to anybody, so...
Thank you.
That's okay. And then, as Commissioner Prince mentioned, I also attended the Custer Emergency Services Meeting on the 17th, so pretty well concludes what I have to report at this time. Commissioner Canada, you still with us?
Yuh-ah. Or are you still here?
Okay, good. Thank you. Attorney items?
First, I want to apologize, and yesterday was a very important contest. We have the grand champion winner present, and I was supposed to be involved in the judging, and I forgot it, and it's to my great regret, because it was a pie baking judging contest. But, Tom, can you, can you introduce the winner?
I, I certainly can. Thank you for your apology, that was, you were sorely missed. We never slowed down any on the pie tasting in your absence, I can tell you, but for fun, we have a potluck at the county building once a month, and so I volunteered in July to cook hamburgers and hot dogs, and everybody else brings in all the other stuff, and I said, you know, we got into a conversation about dessert, and so, of course, somebody thought they made the best pie, and somebody else thought that was a lie, and so things progressed from there, and I said, you know what, let's just have a pie baking contest, tied into our potluck dinner and, or lunch yesterday. So, we had six pies entered, and the honorable Judge Hunter, and Constable Mike Halpin, and I ended up being the judges, was a blind judging, I had no idea who, who made the pies. So, we got done, well, we picked a clear winner, but Judge Hunter thought maybe we should have an honorable mention, because she didn't happen to pick the winning pie, it was her second-place pie, and she wanted to give kudos to her second, or her first-place pie. I said, okay, we can do that. Well, we had $60 in prize money we were offering, and so we decided to maybe, it was supposed to be a winner-take-all, but we decided, maybe we should do $50 to the winner, $10 to the honorable mention. Well, the reason I take all the time to explain that to you is because Mrs. Gady happened to have the winning pie and the honorable mention pie. So, she...
There are those that believe that it was a setup.
Yeah, there were some people that Jackie Hop, I wasn't gonna say any names, I'm sorry, thought that maybe that was a setup, but it was in all fair and squareness, and Mrs. Gady, being the gracious winner she was, took her winnings and split it between the five other competitors, so that was... the, uh, five other competitors, so that was nice, and so, anyway, and then, her daughter ends up yet, yesterday, having her county fair food entries judged, and she qualified to go to the state fair in all three of her food entry deals, uh, so obviously, that apple didn't fall too far from the tree, so... You missed out, Commissioner Kanda, the pie was excellent.
But it sounds like, it sounds like instead of me bringing apple critters, next time, we're gonna ask Brenda to bring a pie.
That's right, that's exactly right, yeah, so, uh, that was just a fun thing we had, but, uh, we had it all worked up that former Judge Smith was gonna even wear his robe, 'cause we thought it'd be a fun to have a judge judge, so, but, uh, thank you for at least volunteering, sir, and I apologize for not sending out an email the day before reminding everybody, so it's really not all your fault.
It was my loss, though, for sure.
Yeah.
All right, for other things...
Congratulations, Brenda and Ben.
Thanks.
Other items I wanna talk about, I, the usual stuff, I get requests just about every day from, uh, some other elected officials or other department heads or persons that work for the county to look over, uh, various documents, uh, agreements, sometimes contracts, and so I do that regularly. Spent a lot of time working with Cindy Howard the last couple of weeks, she needed a, an independent contractor agreement, sort of a standard form that she can use, uh, for all of the, uh, the grants and the other money that she gets, uh, that needs to be, uh, spent for fire cleanup, fire mitigation, flood, cleanup, all those things that happen, so I put together an agreement for her, um, and I reviewed, uh, an intergovernmental agreement that she wants to enter into, or it's actually the airport board with, uh, State Emergency Agency to use the airport in the event of some sort of an emergency. I look at memorandum, memorandums of understanding fairly regularly. As Commissioner Kanda mentioned, I've been working on a lease purchase agreement for the land that the county, or actually, right now, it's still our Justice Center Committee, uh, has recommended would be a good location for a contemplated justice center in the future, and I put together a lease purchase agreement that I'm gonna be sharing with the Pablo attorney representing the Haga Trust that owns the, the seven-plus acres of land that we're looking at. Uh, there's still some details that I need to work out, particularly regarding the interest that would accrue on the lease payments, so I'm gonna be talking to the attorney and see if we can come to an agreement on that, and hopefully, I'll have something I can present fairly soon. On this, this, something that Commissioner Kanda was talking about, talking about a land swap for that tower, the documents that I've actually seen, uh, talk about assignment of a right-of-way, not actually conveying ownership of that land, so I'm, I guess, I'm, and I haven't really been involved in it that much, but I guess I need to get a little more information, because we wouldn't be, if we're giving away land, we're not getting land in return, we're getting a right-of-way, but not actual ownership, and I just wanna be sure that everybody understands that when we're going forward on that. A gentleman from AT&amp;T talked to us last month about leasing land near the Sheriff's Department for a tower, and he reached out to me and asked where we were on that, so I need to find out from you, he, uh, he said, "As soon as possible, I would like to know if the site south of the jail exercise yard, exercise yard is viable for the county." Nothing is ever final until the lease is signed by the county, the lease will include engineered drawings of the site plan and tower for the county to approve, as well as defense, landscaping, utility, and access details, uh, but if I can submit those exact coordinates and elevation for the jail site, it will allow AT&amp;T to complete their analysis, and then we can proceed, so I guess I need to know if you're, if the board is prepared at this time to approve the, the site that they're looking at, so that he can then go forward with the other things that need to be done, but there wouldn't be a lease signed at this time, just a commitment that that's the land.
Okay, can we talk about that for a second?
I have the impression we approved that when...
That's what I was also going to add, is I thought we kinda gave the go-ahead to move forward, but I'm not sure that, that's from Evan Brooks, correct, sir?
Right, right.
I'm not sure that, he probably took that away, uh, from that meeting, but yeah, Commissioner Kanda, do you wanna weigh in on this?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, after we discussed it, uh, the other day, looked at what they're proposing, I don't have a problem with it.
Well...
Go ahead.
If I may, um, I, I think we did this, uh, not in a meeting, we just listened and discussed, so would it be appropriate for me to just make a motion to approve, uh, the continuation of discussion with the AT&amp;T, um...
Yeah, I think so.
To work through the tower, okay, so I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll move that, uh, we continue discussions with AT&amp;T for leasing, um, a site near the, um, county jail, uh, for an AT&amp;T tower.
Okay.
Uh, I just wanna add that it's gonna service first net and also cellular service, 'cause the first net's really the important part, in my opinion.
Oh, second to motion, uh, it's been moved in second that the county move authorize, uh, Evan Brooks's company to move forward with AT&amp;T on that proposed site south of the exercise yard at the jail, uh, discussion.
Yeah, I got a, a couple items there, and so, uh, it is good to move forward to discuss that, we need to understand that Jay mentioned, uh, what's gonna be moved through the tower, and what we can do about eliminating existing towers that's on the, the jail today, we don't, we don't need a bunch of antennas, so we just gotta, we got, we need more data, and we need, uh, it looks like a good idea, we just gotta get the details and see what, uh, can develop.
Yeah, I agree, and obviously, until they are given the go-ahead to, to move forward with the engineering on that, they're not gonna be able to give us any information as far as, uh, what the tower will support, so on and so forth, so I think this is the first step in giving them the green light to go ahead and do, do their long lat and their elevation and get the engineering started on that.
Agreed.
Okay, yes, sir? Yes?
My, my, a question on this, is that gonna have any effect on the area for the judicial system or center of the...
Uh, physically or electronically?
Yeah, physically.
Both, um, we've discussed that, uh, we don't believe it will, uh, it's probably gonna be between a hundred and a hundred-and-fifty-foot tower, uh, that'll be part of the engineering, once they get the green light to go ahead, they will look into that, uh, it's far enough west of the proposed justice center that, uh, we don't believe that'll be a problem. We're also looking at the possibility of a heliport there, uh, Flight for Life, that type of thing, and we do not believe it will be an encumbrance on that either, so...
That's the right question.
Thank you, it's a good question, yeah, okay.
And Mr. Brooks did address some of that, that there, you know, part of the engineering drawings would include warning lights for helicopter traffic, also that the term of the lease, uh, 'cause originally, it was gonna go on for like, what?
Seventy-five years.
Yes, and now, the proposal would be an initial five-year term with four renew, renewal terms of five years each, so a total of twenty-five years. Um, and that there would be a specific provision in it that other telecommunications providers would be allowed to use the tower, uh, as long as it's reasonably feasible, so they certainly understand that's something the county's interested in, so I will, well, as soon as you vote on this, I'll let him know that it's okay to go ahead and get busy with the...
Thank you.
Engineering drawings and everything else.
Good, perfect. Uh, further discussion, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion, uh, opposed nay, motion carries. Uh, so we will authorize Mr. Brooks to move forward on behalf of AT&amp;T and, uh, get that stuff going the right direction, thank you, sir, thanks, Commissioner Kanda, appreciate it, um...
That's everything I had for this morning.
Thank you, sir. Administrative assistant items?
Um, I believe that I sent out an update on the IGA with, for the tower, that just specifies that, um, Custer County will take care of paying all of the bills and invoicing of the five parties for their portion, um, that was just a small change in wording, so, um, I have a new one to sign, and we'll get that over to the hospital.
Yeah, you, you received my email about that, that was, we discussed that in CES meeting yesterday, and, uh, the calendars move forward now, so actually, the fire department will be probably the last ones to sign at their board meeting, because they just had a board meeting, and the board meeting for the clinic is coming up next Wednesday, so, that's why we changed that, yes, sir.
Just publicly, I'd like to thank you for the work you've done on this.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah, we're in revision number lord knows what on the IGA, but...
Well, I said, it's been on my desk for about a year and a half, so...
Good job, thank you.
I think now everybody's reasonably satisfied with the, the language in that, in the IGA, so we will move forward, uh, with that. Anything else, ma'am?
That's it.
Okay. Uh, let's move on to unfinished business, then, uh, we have added the fire ban extension, I asked, uh, Mrs. Gady if she would draft up, uh, a revised resolution for said fire ban extension, um, and I think she forwarded those to us, so, uh, did you see that, attorney?
I did, I did.
Okay, all right, um, Commissioner Kanda?
Yeah, I thought...
Okay, um, so I would move that the resolution extending the fire ban, uh, I'm assuming these numbers are continuing to change, correct, so this would be a new resolution?
Yes.
Eighteen dash thirteen, uh, extending the fire ban for an additional thirty days. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Been moved in second it to extend the fire ban for thirty days, stage-two fire ban, um, via Resolution eighteen dash thirteen, debate, discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, first, I'd like to make a comment, we heard yesterday, that kinda floored me, we heard that even with the rain, uh, that the wood at a hardware store right now, a two-by-four, if you went to buy, is wetter than the brush and all the debris that we have in the county, so even with a nice rain, it just kinda rolled off, and it's still very, very dry and very dangerous. Okay, that was just a comment, I thought that was very interesting, um, Cindy Howard mentioned that yesterday, and it really resonated with me. Uh, my question is, I know that the, um, BLM, uh, their fire ban, they put on through the end of the year with the caveat that they can rescind it at any time they choose. As opposed to doing this on a thirty-day continuous basis, is there a reason we would not want to do something similar?
Personally, I don't believe there is, um, I think this is how it's been done in the past, and that's...
I'm fine with it, it's just, I hate for it to get away from us.
Right, um, yeah, I, I think we're in an unusual year, but nonetheless, I don't see the harm in putting a long-term fire ban in place and then rescinding it when it's appropriate. Commissioner Kanda?
Aye, aye, I'm ambivalent, but I tend to not support that, uh, only because it forces us to make decisions sooner. I don't like the fact, I mean, eventually, you can get to a point where, where do you draw the line, so to be perfectly safe, we'll always leave it on, let's take a look at it, so, I would rather, uh, keep it like it is, and I was gonna suggest even, uh, now, because we are in a month and season, we're gonna see more rain theoretically, since we have, so, but I would like to be able to, uh, just for the sake of the ranchers and the people that are trying to maintain their brush pile and their, and their fire mitigation process, that we, uh, be able to look at it, uh, if it continues, uh, to say that, uh, we, we can rescind it at some, any point that we decide to do that within the next month.
Okay, yeah, uh, and then back to, I'll follow up on Commissioner Prince's comment about the energy release component, the ERC values of these, uh, materials, we're setting state records right now for ERC values across the state in these drought areas, that it's just never, never been that dry for those fuel loads, so, uh, I thought that was a pretty amazing statistic we heard yesterday as well, so, um, I...
Just comment.
Yeah, I think we're just in discussion here, I think, uh, something, if we wanna pursue this, we can put that on an agenda, obviously, I would like to have input from the fire chief and the fire marshal as well, uh, and see what they think about it, um, there is a possibility, I guess, that we get it on a long-term basis, we kinda put it on the back shelf, I don't think we would forget about it, but, uh, people may wonder about that as well, so, uh, the other thing about doing it on a monthly extension basis does kinda keep it in the public eye when we talk about it at our commission meeting, so, uh, further discussion on the motion, which is to adopt Resolution eighteen dash thirteen?
I have one comment I'd like to make after you vote, something to do with the fire ban, but not about this resolution.
Okay, thank you, remind me if I try to move on. Hearing no further, actually, let me back up, um, the board has set a policy that any unfinished business or new business prior to a vote being taken will hear a public comment, so at this time, if you have public comment concerning the extension of the fire ban, uh, you would be more than welcome to, uh, speak at this time. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, uh, Resolution eighteen dash thirteen, a resolution extending a stage-two fire ban for an additional thirty days has been approved. Uh, I, Commissioner Prince and I will sign that, uh, Commissioner Kanda, when you get back into town, if you would do the same, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I sure will, I'll pop by on Friday.
I wonder whose desk we should leave that on, mm, how about Mrs. Gady's? And then she, she will also take that to, uh, the clerk and have her attest to it as well, so, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to make a statement.
Go ahead.
Uh, the coffee's good, uh, tea is good, and the cookies are good, it's open to everybody in here, so...
Oh, very good, thank you, yeah, it wasn't just for us.
No.
Okay, perfect, uh, Attorney Smith, floor is yours.
Well, as you know, I subscribe to the all-the-county attorneys in the state of Colorado, we have a private website where we can exchange information, and I monitor that all the time, of course, uh, and there's been a lot of discussion about the fire bans, because, you know, a lot of counties are in the same position we're at, some of the counties have actually authorized the sheriff, they've delegated to the sheriff the authority to make the decision on his own, I, I question the legality of that frankly, but it's being done in other counties, uh, once the commissioners initiate a fire ban, they give the authority, or to delegate the authority to the sheriff to decide if it's gonna be lifted for a period of time, it's something we can certainly talk about, I have copies of what other counties have done along these lines, and if it's something we wanna consider doing in the future, where we give the sheriff the authority to decide if it's gonna be lifted for a period of time and then imposed again, I just wanted to throw that out there for you, 'cause I wasn't aware it was being done, I, my feeling is that the county commissioners cannot delegate their, sort of legislative responsibility to other officials, but some counties are doing it, so, it's there.
Okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate that, um... Mrs. Gady, do you have the email date on the email that included the grants that Beth Archuleta wanted us to look at?
I don't, I thought it was, I just didn't look at the date.
I did too, I...
You took that to re-tack?
Yeah.
Might've been Monday.
I just cannot get my eye on it here, and I thought maybe...
They do have hard copies, obviously, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have the hard copies here, too, I have the hard copy, but I, I just have the date, I wrote them up there.
There you go.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, we will move on, I was trying to find the electronic copies of, uh, grants that Beth Archuleta, the re-tack grants regional... Archuleta, the re-tack grants, regional emergency trauma grants, she just asked us to look over those, which we have looked at them, or at least I have. Commissioner Kanda, did you have a chance to look at them electronically?
Not yet.
These documents basically are, they are the grant themselves, and then the last page is a signature page that the commissioners agree with her moving forward with submitting those grants. We spoke yesterday at the CES meeting about that, and it's basically just an approval to move forward so she can submit these grants. That would be the only commitment the board would be making about those. If you're more comfortable in waiting to see these...
Actually, Tom, I, I, I didn't state what, what they were, I didn't see them back in. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, yeah. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the application grant process for the re-tack.
I'll move the application process to move forward.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll second it. There are six, excuse me, there are five of them.
Five, yeah.
And, and if I may, Commissioner Kanda, I think the motion should say we approve all five of them.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Okay, good.
Thank you. I appreciate that, sir, thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of County Commissioners have approved the grant applications for the re-tack that Mrs. Archuleta has provided us. Further discussion?
I went through them and I found them to be complete, and I appreciate the work she did.
Yeah, thank you.
Question?
Could you just share what they are for?
Oh, let's see here, fifteen hundred dollar application for, uh, see what it exactly says.
It's not a, the first one's not a specific one.
No, it's not.
It's just fifteen hundred dollars for use by the EMS, and it goes on to talk about for, just their operational facilities, upgrades their radios and things like that, rent the patient aid.
Uh, question number eleven says, if funded, what will the grant money be used for? Medical directions from Dr. Weber is that grant. And then another grant for three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. We are in need of a new, um, tough book for report writing.
That's a computer.
Is that tough or touch?
It's a tough book.
Pardon?
It's a tough book, is it?
Tough book, yeah.
Laptop.
Seven hundred and fifteen dollars.
And then the seven hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. We will be purchasing training videos for the employees of the Custer County Hospital District to be compliant and update with OSHA requirements. And the fourth one's for two thousand dollars. We would like to send four employees to the Keystone Conference in November of 2018. And the final one, two hundred and twenty dollars. We would like to send four employees to the WILZ Symposium in 2019. Commissioner Kanda, any other discussion?
No, I'm done.
Mr. Prince?
No, sir.
Other comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We will sign and approve these grant applications. I'll sign them later.
Okay.
For Beth Archuleta for the re-tack grants. We'll move on to the next item of business, Wetmore Community Building and the Wetmore Hardscrabble Genealogical and Historical Society request. Do you have a spokesperson today, or do you want to do this generally, or what would your preference be? Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Kanda, I'm going to ask the spokesperson to come forward, give us a minute, I'll get her a chair, that way you'll be able to hear a little better as well.
That'd be great, thank you.
And while we're doing that, why don't we just take about a two or three-minute break real quick? Gracious offer, Hardscrabble Genealogical and Historical Society, thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. I would like to just make a couple of comments real quick. I have met with this group, and I also met with the Board of Directors for the Wetmore Community Center. I think the approach today will be, certainly we will honor your request to be on the agenda to hear your proposal, and then if need be, we will, I will also allow discussion from the board as well, so if that's okay with you guys, I think that would be appropriate. So I believe we've all three read the request, obviously, that you be on the agenda today and then the general contents of that, but for the record, if you would like to summarize that, floor is yours.
Summarizing, we had asked to be on the agenda to discuss modification of the MOU, which governs the community building and the library board. We also asked for assigned space in the north room for artifact display cabinets, historic piano, various wall hangings, binders, et cetera, that are relevant to the Wetmore area. In asking for those things, at the time, we were asking for full access to the building, including keys, without having to bother other occupants of the building. We were soliciting your support in order to accomplish these goals. Yesterday, we had a meeting with the community board, which was the first official time period that we could meet with them since this email is written on the twenty-seventh.
Let me check. Bill, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we just had a beep and I was hoping we didn't get disconnected, sorry, go ahead.
We were unable to sign the document that was forwarded by the board to the History This was viewed by you and by Attorney Watkins.
Okay.
And we were told that it was not an official-type document.
Okay.
Now...
I'll pass this down.
I'm not wanting to cause problems or anything because this was the discussion item yesterday, and the writer...
Can I interrupt you just for a second?
Go ahead, Bill.
So what is she talking about, the, the actual document that I see that was part of the agenda, or is it something else?
It was included in our board packet dated May twenty-third.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, dear friends of Wetmore Community Center Board has met, that is the document she's referring to. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep, I got it.
We were told yesterday that the county attorney had reviewed that document and said, yes, send that to us. And thank you very much.
So this is a document that Attorney Smith requested be sent to you guys. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's my understanding, but it's not very legalized. To me, it's pretty generic. It does not delve into some of the other items.
Let me just ask a question about May. Now this, I looked at this as, when I first got this, I mean, it's dated May twenty-third, so this wasn't something that was drafted specifically, obviously, from your meeting yesterday, is that correct?
No, no, this is a prior.
Okay, got it.
In going through the meeting yesterday, it was very productive. I think that the board and those of us from the History Society agreed to various items, one of which seemed to be, instead of being a reciprocal board, or we would only be an entity using the building. That's fine, except that we had been told that the north room would hold various items from the historical board, and we just felt like we needed to have something in writing saying that, day after tomorrow, you're not going to be kicked out of the building and you need to have everything expunged from the building before that point in time.
Okay.
The board has assured us that is not the fact. Nan has been very gracious, helpful on indicating various places within the north room. However, being shied and hurt one time makes us very shy for this time. So we're asking for something that could be written to protect the board, the library board, and the Historical Society for the future. This could be done in a workshop atmosphere. Doesn't have to take up your time, except for the final blessing of what we come up with, but it would be something that all of us would work on.
Okay.
May I ask a question, Ms. Stone, please?
Yes.
I've been to the Historical Society exhibits across the, and they're beautiful. They're a very historical part of Wetmore, and I commend the society for collecting that and putting it on display.
Thank you.
When I read this letter, though, not understanding very well, is two cabinets enough for you to display? It seemed to me like you had much more available to display. I mean, it seems like you're not being offered very much space. Is that appropriate, or am I wrong?
We could use more space because we do have one display cabinet that we wanted to bring. There are two display cabinets upstairs that Jerry Draper gave to us that have been stored here. We have gone through our items and really called out those that are not important to the history.
I see.
We've got some items that are going to go into shadow boxes and be hung on the wall. The lone pine window has been cut down to a size that could go into the north room. It's being framed right now. The piano is important. I, I think those are the big items. Some of the smaller items would go inside the display cabinets.
So, just so I understand, you feel that the space that's being offered in the May twenty-third letter would probably be sufficient?
I could say probably would be sufficient, but we would want to go over with Nan because what Nan's allowing us to do is utilize library space.
I understand that.
What happens if the library needs additional space? Do we get consolidated into the nurses' room? That's just for an example.
Right. These are things that, I, I think what you said is exactly right. We ought to have an opportunity for everybody to sit at a table in a workshop and work out the details that you're discussing, length of time, keys, what-ifs, and come up with an agreement. I went through the bylaws of the community center or the community board, and, let me see if I can find it real quick. I highlighted mine where it says that, and I kind of just jotted it down, that the purpose of the board is for the betterment of the community, which I think certainly, I don't think anybody would say that the Historical Society is not for the benefit of the community. So I think what you're asking appears to me to be extremely appropriate, realistic. Let's sit down and let's work it all out and do it in a workshop and let's get it done and let's get an agreement that we can sign between the organizations and signed off by the county commissioners and, yeah, and I honestly, I really think you ought to be, whether that was still remain available or not, because I understand that was part of the question, whether it was or not, I personally feel this building is where you ought to be. This is the, this is the community building, not a house across the street. So I commend you and I really commend the board also for taking this on and working it out, so I think we need a workshop and let's get it done.
Thank you. I do have to state that it was not just a house, it was a historic post office from eighteen eighty-one. That was remodeled.
I went through the post office, back to your building, to the, yeah, so...
But I appreciate that.
Good.
Nan, what am I missing?
Um, I'd be glad to speak a little bit, if it's...
Okay, well, let's, let me, yeah, we'll, we will allow that here in just a minute. I want to follow up on something Commissioner Kanda said real quick, and that is, it's my understanding, and I've, I've looked at the, I've got the bylaws right here, the memorandum of understanding, as well as the, I'm going to call it a letter. I don't know really what, how else to describe that. It's got some signatory lines on it. My general thinking is that, as of today, this letter is really not accurate or relevant. I mean, I think there's points in there that are, but my understanding is that the board, the community center board has offered up more than what is in this letter, and so we can talk about that as we go along.
That is correct.
But to me, I read this letter and I think, that's probably not relevant to where we're at today. It was probably relevant on May twenty-third, but I don't think it is today. So I guess my comment to Commissioner Prince is that it's my understanding that, that is not just the two cabinets. They are, they being the board, is willing to allow the Historical Society to put a lot of stuff in that north room, as well as display stuff in the library itself, and as well as cabinets in the hallway. At least the one that's currently in the hallway now would be offered to you as well. Is that the general understanding? When I read this letter, it's kind of, you're going to get two file cabinets, one of them in the storage room and one of them in the hallway, and you can put your piano in there and that's the end of it. And I don't think that's where we're at today. I think we've, we've gone a long ways beyond that, so... So, yeah, I kind of would like to take that letter off of the, off of the board for now. And, because I don't think it reflects where we're at. So, I agree. I think that the details can be hammered out. I believe the library, sorry, the Community Center Board is willing to accommodate the Historical Society and to the best of their ability. I reread the original bylaws, and of course, the Library Board is set up, and I'll pull it up so I'm not paraphrasing. Just give me a second.
The Community Center Board.
Gosh, I keep saying the Library Board. Thank you. The Community Center Library Board, by their bylaws, shall be, I'm sorry, the Community Center owned by Custer County shall be governed by a board of Wetmore area residents to serve as administrators. So, it's, in my opinion, it's not the job of the commissioners to administrate this property. That's why there is a board in place. And so, I don't want to usurp the responsibilities given to that board by their bylaws. But I certainly would be interested in helping facilitate some mutual agreements of the use of this facility. I believe I sent, I think it was you, Margaret, I sent an email after our conversation, and I will make that public today. The content of that email basically was, I was a little surprised after our meeting in West Cliff to realize that the plan was to only have that display available to the public a couple hours per week. And so, I'm not sure, this, this may not even be necessary for me to say this, but I want to be open and honest. In my thinking, I'm not sure that for two hours a week would necessitate you to have full access to this building. Again, I think you alluded to that as maybe being another entity that uses this building and not necessarily an administrative part of this building. So, I, I think we're good. I would like to turn the floor over if you're okay with that, Margaret, and hear some comments from the Community Center Board, if that's agreeable. So, that, Nan or whoever would like to speak, you may certainly do that.
Okay. Do you want me to sit in that chair, or is from here okay?
I think if you'll speak up a little, it's okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Candace, are you still able to hear?
Yeah, if she speaks up, if she's speaking promptly right now.
Okay.
I, I think that what Margaret said is true. But I think that you can, from what she says, I think you can get the idea that we haven't been working with them very long. I have spent hours working and listening and talking and working this out. Yesterday, we had a very long meeting with them. From the get-go, we have given them everything they've asked for. It says here, "We would like assigned space in the North Room for artifact display cabinets." We've had the two cabinets close to a year sitting there waiting. Historic piano, I, that's always, they've always been welcome to do that since we started seriously talking about this. Wall hangings, we've always agreed on that. Notebook binders, a work table, desk chairs. There are two tables in there with chairs. The, the county office has a desk and chairs. File cabinets with historical documentation, that's always been, we, they can put two file cabinets in the county office because the North Room can't accommodate those. But the, the county office room only has a desk and chairs. That would be the perfect place for it. This building is open for anyone in Wetmore. I mean, this is where they have, that's why this building is here, for Wetmore. We, and we, we, we agree that, that the Wetmore Historical Society enriches residents' lives. And this for the benefit of the community. I, I want you to understand, I've been working, I've spent hours talking to them and working with them. This is all, from the get-go, we talked about all of this in the North Room, from the get-go. So, that this keeps coming up and coming up. Yesterday, we spent a long, long time together, and we said, if you can, we made it clear. In fact, they said they have a notebook, they've taken a picture. We wanted a picture and, and writing about every single thing put in there so it could be documented, that's theirs, that if anything happened to it, that it wasn't our responsibility. It, it was for everyone's benefit. We agreed on everything, except rewriting the MOU. The board runs this building. The library answers to the board. I mean, if I need anything, I go to the board. As of several years ago, Court and I came onto the board when, when we first started this restoration because it was a huge project. We worked for several years before anything even started. They just, they needed more manpower, and that's when we came on. But I, I was at the library for 15 years before. If I needed something, I went to the board. That's how it works. You go to the board. The board, the library's not in charge of this building, the board's in charge of this building. And that's, yeah, we don't need a workshop. We spent a long time upstairs. We got it right down to said, you can move in as soon as you sign this, saying, this is what you have in the building. If anything happens, it's not, we're not going to have to pay for it. We made that very clear at the end of the, we, we felt they didn't need a key. Alden opens this building at 8:00 a.m. He locks this building promptly at 8:00 p.m. I can attest for that. I've walked outside this building at 8:05 and been locked out and had to go ask for the key. So, so the building is open many hours. The library's open 20 hours a week. We feel like the more keys that are given out, the more vulnerable this building becomes. Everybody on the board, on the community building board, we, we, it's very normal for us to come, open the, open the building earlier, like the North Room, when, when the voting took place up there. I came an hour early, cleaned to make sure everything was perfect, opened it so that the, the people with the voting box, that, that's normal for us. We are full-time servants of this community. We are not on the boards so we can lord it over here. We are committed to this county, to this building, to our community. And we put in a lot of hours. I feel like we have talked about this, and talked about this, and talked about this. The only thing they seem to be held up on is that they want to be written into the fact that they are, they govern this building along with the board. I don't see that in the board's bylaws, that there are other entities, and this is how you do it. You go before the board. You, if you're going to have some event, you make sure that someone else doesn't have an event. You sign a paper, put down money in case anything happens. That's, that's how this building works. They want to be written into being, I guess, part of the, making the decisions on this board. And also keys. The building is open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The library's open 20 hours a week. So, I feel like we have offered them everything, except rewriting the MOU and giving a key. But that.
I'll give you my thought, if I may.
Yeah, please.
Thank you for your comment. The idea of the workshop, to me, was to actually say, I will do this, 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 and this. And then both entities sign it, and we're done. Come up to just an agreement between the two of you. I did not hear anybody, nor have I seen anything, where they're asking for any authority in running this building. And if that is something that is latent, that we don't know about, then that is something that your board, not your board, excuse me, the, the Center Board needs to discuss. And I believe they have the authority to say yes or no. You may, you may want to put a member of the Society or the Historical Group as a member of the board. That's your choice. I'm not going to get in the middle of that. You're going to govern that, not you.
Yeah, I understand.
I know you're the library.
No, I understand, I understand.
When I say you, I'm talking about.
I understand.
The Wetmore Community Center. But it does sound to me like there's an agreement, basically, on where things are going to go, how they're going to be done. And to me, the object of the workshop would be to write that down so we understand, because I agree with both sides, let's write it down so we understand what we're doing. Sign it, and then we move along as if, as if it was an inter-agency agreement, even though, as far as I'm concerned, the Historical Society is an extremely important part of Wetmore. This is our Wetmore building. This is where it ought to be. And, and you're completely in agreement with that. I understand that.
I've always been, yeah.
I know you are. You said that right, the first thing you said. So, we just really need to write down, what are we going to do and how are we going to do it? That's my idea. So, that was, when the workshop idea came up, I said, that's a good idea. We can hammer out the words of the agreement and get it done.
Okay. Let, let me read to you from, this is from the letter that they sent to you, June 27th. This is, this is, the subject will be "The Wetmore Community Building and Its Relationship With Wetmore Hardscrabble Genealogical and Historical Society." "We would like the Memorandum of Understanding, which governs the Wetmore Community Building, to be rewritten to include WHGHS as a permanent resident in the building in a proportionate role with the Wetmore Library Board, the Wetmore Community Board, and the Wetmore Library Board."
Well, that's what she was speaking to.
I remember, I remember reading that.
Okay.
And, and I certainly understand what you're saying, and, and maybe I didn't read it, maybe it didn't process to, I want to be a part of the decision making.
And I explained to them yesterday, the Wetmore Community Board answers to the, the Wetmore Community Center.
Right.
The building board is in charge of this. I, as the Wetmore Library, answer to them. And I feel like they would answer to them. There needs to be one, you know, you get too many people and you're going to have problems. I can assure you.
Let me take a question or a comment. Yes, sir.
Well, to answer Jay's question, we did have a memorandum of understanding. We sent a letter of what we had talked about, and we only protected ourselves. We asked Clint about this. We said, in the letter, anything you want to put in there to save the, that's not belonging to the county. Hey, this piano and so on and so forth. We sent this letter to him, and the same thing we're agreeing on right now, they didn't sign the letter. They turned around and came to you. That's where we're at. So, when you say there wasn't anything, there was something. We agreed to start with it.
Okay.
The thing is, we have done all of this.
Yep.
We have done all of this, and we keep.
I get it. But if we set a, if we set a date and a time, we will finalize it, it'll get done, as opposed to just continuing the discussion. I'm thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
This is the letter that we, that Ruth wrote out as Clint Smith had asked her to.
Right, I read the letter.
And so, I showed it the board. They wanted a few changes. I said, those changes are fine. We'll get the changes and, and send, you know.
That was the May 23rd letter.
There were just a few changes there in pencil. And this was a while ago. And they agreed to them. And then the next thing is we get this letter here. And I just thought.
Okay. Let me ask a couple questions. I would address one of them to the Historical Society. Do you still believe that this sentence that Nan just read about that you would like to have a proportionate role in the Community Board, in the Wetmore Library Board, is that still applicable? Do you still believe that?
No, as what I stated earlier. I said, let's talk about being an entity in the building.
Just like anybody else would be.
Just like 4H.
We're an entity that comes down here and has a meeting.
Correct.
I came down here personally and had a meeting, and I went through the process and wrote a deposit check. Not that you'd have to write a deposit check every time you had a meeting. But nonetheless, you're talking, so this is not really applicable now, is that correct?
Correct.
So, some of this documentation is water over the bridge. Exactly, okay. So, I wanted to make sure that everybody understands that.
Sit down, discuss it, write it down.
Yeah, so, what I would like to see is, because you're, you're willing to be considered an entity, but at the same time, it's not like you're just going to come rent this facility for an afternoon and then leave. So, it's a little different than normal.
Well, 4H, 4H has a regular meeting every month here. It's written down. I mean, this is not.
Right.
This is something that we do.
Right, I understand that. I'm just saying, they're leaving stuff here, 4H. I don't see any 4H stuff in here today that we need to be concerned about, somebody taking it or whatever. So, my point is, I think, an additional document that spells out what we're talking about would be appropriate. I don't know that it needs to be, the Memorandum of Understanding needs to be rewritten. I think just a document pertaining to the specifics of this situation would be appropriate. Now, we rewrite the whole Memorandum of Understanding between the county and the Wetmore Community Center Board. Now, that's a whole nother cat to skin. I don't know that we need to change that particularly, but I don't see a problem with a document to say, okay, this, the, the board agrees that this is the approach we're going to take, and the Historical Society agrees that that's reasonable. I don't see a problem with that.
That's what their letter said.
Okay, I, I, again, I think, if you're talking about the letter of May 23rd, I think that's water over the bridge. I think that's an outdated document. But I think things have progressed past that letter. I'm not discounting the fact that you wrote the letter and made the offer. I don't think, if we were to sit down today and hammer out the agreement, it would be exactly what's in that letter. I think we've agreed to a lot more now than what was in that letter, May 23rd.
We really haven't. But I, if, if it needs to be rewritten, that's fine. But I'm saying that this has been laid out to them for a long time.
How about we set up a time when the Society and the board get together? If you would like, I'll come down and I'll take notes. I'm not going to sway either way. I'll write with the counselor approval after we're done. We've agreed to the following. You will do this, I will do this, and then we will get it done. I will work it through to make sure that we get signatures on both sides.
Can I make a comment?
Let me make sure Commissioner Prince has finished.
What I would just want to say is, I, I would suggest, I recognize the frustration, and I can hear it in your voice, that you've given and given, and it hasn't gotten done. I understand your side saying that, wait a minute, it isn't what we really want. That's why it hasn't got, we weren't going to sign that letter because it wasn't what. I get, I get all that. And that's exactly why we sit at the table all together and say, what about this? What about that? Write down what we agreed to. And then I can write it. Both you look at it and say, yep, that's what we said. The counselor looks at it, says, it's reasonable. Go ahead and sign it, and now we have an agreement. So, I'm willing to do that if you would like me to. I, I'm not trying to push myself in the middle of this. I'm just offering assistance. So, I, I'm kind of done with that, but I'm willing to do that. Let's get a date, because I understand, there is still discrepancies going on.
Commissioner Candace, would you like to weigh in, sir?
Yeah, just, just, because I've been listening, and I understand it all as well. I really applaud Jay's vision over backwards there to help. I agree, there is, this is not an issue between the commissioners and the Community Center Board. The board is in charge. We need to make sure they have the authority, and that we agree with the authority they've got.
Can you speak up a little? I've got the volume turned up all the way.
Okay, I agree that, I'll keep, I'll speak as loud as I can. I agree that, that this is not an issue between the board, Wetmore Community Center Board, and the county commissioners. So, you, that's established. I also believe that the Community Center Board is working in good faith, according to their bylaws, to deal with anybody that wants to, should be able to use that, that building. And I think, I've heard everybody say that that's occurred. And so, I think there, there is, as I'm all that, there is no need for a workshop. You guys are working the details like anybody would to, to use that building. So, I think that it's, all you need to do is go back to the drawing board, come up with the correct, you all are saying that you agree. Write it down, and Jay pointed out, and do it. And we don't, it's not up to us commissioners to decide, point a day and time. That's up to you all. And I think we're all in agreement with, with you all. And I applaud the effort. I, I'm really glad to see we're protecting the history of Wetmore as well. And it's neat, as a matter of fact, I want to come down there and, and look at it all. when it, when you get it in, in there. So I would suggest, moving on, I think, uh, this is resolved from our point of view. I don't think we need to vote on anything, uh, personally, as the commissioners. And I, uh, would support you all going off and set it in time, and come back and show us, uh, show us the results.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Man, my computer is wanting to just have a big old walight fit today. I don't know what that's all about. There we go. Are, would both groups be amenable to sitting down and hammering out a document that spells out exactly what both parties agreed to?
Yes, I, I, yeah, I thought we...
But, and I will take exception to that a little. I don't see any document here that I would be comfortable with if I was on the Historical Society. That letter, to me, is old news. There's things that I think we've talked about that aren't in that letter. So that's why I say, I believe another, a new document would be appropriate. Now, that's my opinion. You guys can certainly do whatever you choose to do, and whatever you can agree to do. Uh, I think Commissioner Prince's offer is reasonable, um, to sit and document that meeting, and you guys can discuss it one more time, so we can get that on a document, and, uh, and then circulate it between the two entities. Have you sign that, and we move forward. Uh, I would probably suggest, maybe you wait until you move in, until after that document's done. But that's just me. I think that would be the common sense thing to do. I would expect, if you guys are willing to meet, that could happen in the next week or ten days, myself. I don't think it's rocket science at this point. I think everybody pretty well had their talking points. Get it on paper, and we're good to go. Now, I... I appreciate when you say, "We're willing to come at this as another entity." I don't believe that that would include a set of keys. I don't believe that that necessarily includes a seat on the board. I don't believe that includes twenty-four hour access. And I think you're all agreeing to that basic precept, correct?
Let's let, let's let the board...
Yeah, yeah. That, I'd say, if you guys can, uh, pick a time when you can sit down and meet, and if you want to include Commissioner Prince, he's made the offer.
Let me propose, okay? How about a week from Friday? That would be August twenty-seventh, excuse me, July twenty-seventh, I'm sorry. A week from Friday. If both sides could write down what their ideas are, what they want, maybe we could meet here in the library, wherever you'd like to meet, and I'll get the, I'll get the information together. I'll put a, what I think I had gleaned from what it said, "I will not take sides." I'll tell you that now. I will not, I'm just gonna facilitate. I'll write it down. Both sides will get to read it and say, "No, no, no, that's not what we said," or, "Yeah, that looks fine, however you wanna do it." And then when both sides say it's okay, I'll write it, I'll, I'll, um, ask Mr., Commissioner, excuse me, Counselor Smith to take a look at it. And if we're all in agreement, then we can just sign it, and we have an agreement, and we'll move forward from that. So I, I'm suggesting a week from Friday, because, um, that's my first really day off. I mean, available day. But it also gives you time to kinda get...
What time?
What exactly? You tell me, I'm open the whole day.
I'll be out of town then.
Okay, well, that's not a good day then. Would August second work? That's the Thursday. I could do Aug, well, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Do you folks feel that that would work for you?
I don't know.
Okay. Why don't I put on the calendar, we'll, we'll meet on August second, say, ten a.m.? Is that okay? Get a chance to get your oatmeal before you meet?
They'd like to do eleven.
Diddy would like eleven.
Eleven?
I have to work that day, but I could probably do it okay at eleven.
Eleven is fine. Why don't we do eleven o'clock on August second?
You gonna start lunch?
Call Domino's. If they deliver, I'll buy.
They do, but it's very costly.
All right, never mind then.
I would like to make one more comment.
Okay, so we'll do it eleven o'clock on August second. We'll meet, if you could bring, you know, what it is you would like, 'cause I think we're gonna go, "We agree, we agree, we agree. Uh, let's talk about this a little more." I think it's, I really don't think there's gonna be a major issue. So, is that okay with everybody? All right, let's put it down for eleven o'clock on August second.
Hey, go ahead.
And we'll come back here.
I had one more comment. No, no, I was waiting, um...
This way, I'll facilitate. We'll get it done. There'll be something done, promise.
I wanna make one more comment.
Sure.
I, I love libraries, I always have. I go to libraries wherever I go. Salida, um, Leadville, Sawatch, they have a room where they have incorporated, uh, old beautiful pieces of furniture. They have incorporated things from their community, old things from their community into the library, and I always loved it. I've always, I've always been open to this. I mean, it's like a dream come true. I just have been frustrated, because I feel like I've, we've talked and talked and talked, and just, we can't please you. But I've always supported this, and I appreciate what you do, I truly do. It's very, very important, and I would love it to be incorporated in the library. And, um, you know, as long as the library, as long as I am director of the library, you don't, and I understand that you have been hurt. I, believe me, I've been there, and you're a little gun shy now. We're not gonna turn around and throw you out. I can assure you that, because it's, it's a total asset. It's an asset to the community, to the library, to everyone. We just, I, I just felt like we were, we kept offering you what you had wanted, and it wasn't working, and I didn't know what else to do. So, um, we'll get this worked out and get you guys moved in, so...
We'll get it done.
Good, thank you, thank you both of you, your groups, for being here today. Thank you for your comments and...
I would like to reply to that.
Sure.
Because when I left yesterday, I said I was gonna be here this morning. We would try to just come in, not take your time. We're working on this. We'll get back to you. It's gotten much more in-depth than what I had anticipated. And, and, and Nan has been, she bent over backwards for us from the very beginning, when Lynn was coming down here and we were talking about it. I have a membership that I have to answer to, and when I go back to them, they have more questions, "Well, what about this? What about that?" Just like you have constituents. The board was wonderful yesterday, and I applaud them, because we've really made huge progress yesterday. We understood a little more from where they were coming. We wanna get it finished, too. We want a home. We wanted to display the home to everybody in the county. And thank you for letting us take this time.
I think it'll work out just fine, and I appreciate your comments. Ask, ask your, uh, the people in your, to send their comments to you ahead of time, so that we can put all that on the table on the second. My goal is to walk out, say, "We have an agreement in principle. We're just getting it on paper now." That's what my, my goal is. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. The one thing we are not lacking here is passion, and that's what makes these things work. You've gotta have passion, especially if you're a volunteer. That's what, that's what keeps you going, so appreciate that.
And I've heard nothing adversarial here.
Yeah, that was nice. That was nice.
This is just, we're gonna work it out. That's all we're gonna do.
A couple of things I wanna just touch base with real quick, uh, and I should've probably done it under Commissioner Items, and I kinda forgot about it. Uh, I did have a discussion about this, uh, and I wanna, you and I have not discussed this, so I know this is new information for you. The possibility of taking this waterless urinal out of there and just sheet rocking over that and be done with it, 'cause we're still not at a hundred percent satisfaction. And I know, you and I have talked about this previously, about the fact, well, we paid the contractors to put it in, and we've spent money on it, but I maintain it's not working. I would like to see maybe us put this back on an agenda and make a decision, or at least have the discussion about just taking that urinal completely out of there, sealing it up.
I'm not gonna fight this one iota. The only reason that I had my, um, I was not in favor of that originally is because I felt it was an architectural or a constructor's problem, and I wanted them to fix it, and they just flat-out refused, and we made a conscious decision, we're not gonna fight it. So if it's better for our folks down, the men down here, excuse me, that they would like it gone, get it out! I'm fine with that, okay? I just was trying to protect the county's interest, 'cause we paid a lot of money for it, and we paid to put it in, and if I could get the architect or contractor to, um, make it work, it'd be fine. From my research, the real problem is, it's just not gonna be used enough to make it work. So I'm not gonna have an issue with it, so if we wanna put a bunch of it, that's fine.
Yeah, I've asked Brenda to put that on the agenda for the thirty-first. We will, uh...
It'll be a two-minute item.
Yeah, we will discuss that, and so we'll move forward from there. So, uh, the other thing I wanted to just mention real quick is that I asked Courtney to provide me some measurements for the front and the, and each side of this building. He has done that. I appreciate that, Courtney, thank you. You must've been in a drafting class sometime. That doesn't just fall out of the sky and land on a piece of paper. So I was after the square footage of the front of this building, and, uh, in the vein of trying to come up with some plan to get this concrete face of the building and the two sides covered with something. We're not, don't even know what that looks like yet, but I said, "I can't even begin if we don't know what that square footage is." In the old days, I was, had a relationship with a wealthy family who owns Summit Brick in Pueblo, uh, so that's probably where I will start, and see if we can get some help, and then maybe get some samples of materials, present that, bring them up, put them up in a coffee room and let you, uh, live with them for a couple of months or what? No, I'm teasing. But I'd like to see us do something and get the front of this building finished. It is so visual, uh, the rest of the building gets lost to me when I look at that old bare concrete wall. So it could be stuck, I mean, nobody's decided anything, and I, we visited with the board, or I visited with the board about it. I don't think they have any preconceived ideas, just, it'd be nice to try to get something done, so, yes, ma'am?
I was talking to a big dreamer last night, and we were thinking that, uh, a tiled scene of, of the Sangre's would be nice.
Wow! Wow!
I don't think, where's his money coming from?
We don't care about the money, I mean...
Yeah.
You know, the, yeah, could be a painted thing. I mean, we're, I, I say "we," I think the board is open to any suggestions.
Willie Britt does unbelievable.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I have seen out of brick, a sculpted scene, out of sculpted brick, of something very similar to that, where you get that whole three D...
They were mentioning, as you crossed the, the Fourth Street Bridge in Pueblo, the, the pretty tiled, sort of the, the, uh, but we were, we were just having fun dreaming, that's all. I just, you know, you were asking for suggestions.
Yeah, and I thought, because of that rounded portion...
The Historical Society just said they'd pay for it.
Oh, nice! I guess if they'd pay for the front of the building, we...
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Uh, but anyway, Courtney, thank you for providing me that, uh, square footage. I appreciate that. We'll move on then. The next item on the agenda is, uh, a public comment section on our agenda. Commissioner Canada, um, was brought up at our last Board of County Commissioners meeting from a citizen, and I kinda, personally, I like the idea of offering the, the public an opportunity to have a comment prior, uh, to we getting to the specific agenda items, and then, of course, at the end of the meeting. So, um, rather than make a motion, which I'm prepared to do, but I'd rather just have a general discussion about this and see, uh, where we, where we stand as a commissioner.
Okay, yeah, and I don't tip, uh, I prefer the discussion. It, it is, there's two sides to it. One is, it's awful tough on somebody that has something to bring up to have to wait for a general comment till the end of the meeting. And it's probably worth considering having it at both places, and I, I wouldn't have a problem with that. We're all gonna let it get out of hand.
Correct, I agree. Commissioner Prince, your thoughts?
I like it the way it is, and I'll tell you why. We always have public comment before any vote takes place. If anybody has a burning issue, they can be asked to put on the agenda. But my real concern is, if we have staff reports, and most of our meetings do, I, and we have to take the staff away from their assigned duties to come talk to us, I hate to drag that on. If we have public comments before the staff reports, um, they'll be away from their assigned duties a lot longer. I think we have ample opportunity for people to comment. I like public comment at the end. I personally don't think it, I think it's okay the way it is, but I'll certainly agree with whatever you guys decide.
Uh, I'll throw my comments out real quick, um, and I respect what Commissioner Prince says about the staff reports. I guess my thought is that if we included a public comment session early in the agenda, that it be limited to X number of minutes, uh, I would probably propose ten or fifteen-minute public comment session, and then we can schedule our staff reports based on that. That staff report thing certainly has merit, but it's a pretty loose-knit arrangement with them anyway. Typically, we end up calling them and asking them to come in, because we're either ahead or behind schedule or whatever. So I would move that the, we modify the agenda to include a public comment period not to exceed fifteen minutes, uh, after the administrative assistant items and prior to the staff report. And I do not make that motion in an argumentative sense based on your comments. So that would be my motion, that we, uh, insert public comment, uh, prior to the staff report.
I'll second it, uh, only 'cause I wanna discuss it.
Okay? Then moved and seconded to modify the agenda on a permanent basis by adding, uh, public comment period prior to the staff report. Discussion?
Okay, so, from my point of view, I agree with Jay. I do think the way we have it is correct. However, if there were a burning issue, uh, it should be put on the agenda. But there are times when somebody needs to get something on the table, and it would be an opportunity for us to not necessarily solve the problem, but to understand that well enough to put it on an agenda, uh, at an appropriate time, or tell them, uh, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll get to it a little later, but not to spend any time on actually dealing with the issue, uh, would be my suggestion. I don't know how to word that, but we need to make this a special public comment period, not, uh, gonna be open to the floor for debate by everybody in their own court until we get it on the agenda.
Okay? Go ahead, sir.
Um, I'm, I'm fine with putting public comment. I mean, transparency is everything we strive so hard to do, and give people opportunity to voice their opinion is obviously what governments hold about. I'm fine with it, especially if we limit it to a specific period of time. I, I just voiced my concern about the staff reports, but if we, if we schedule it with that timeframe, I have no issue with this.
My thought, too, in, in making the motion, I did not include it, 'cause it's not relevant to the motion itself, uh, but I believe it's incumbent upon the commissioners during public comment to treat that as a public comment and not a dialogue and not a discussion. I think it's, it's our duty to sit here and listen to what anybody has to say. I don't believe, uh, we are obligated to even respond to public comment, other than to say, "Thank you, we heard every word you just said."
That's correct.
And if we adhere to that general philosophy, then I don't think we will get into these long, drawn-out periods of public comment, which we have been prone to do. we will get into these long drawn out periods of public comment, which we have been prone to do in the past and I'm as bad as anybody in the room about that. So I agree, Commissioner Kanda, with what you say. If we philosophically have some of our own parameters around that and we do treat it truly as a public comment session and not dialogue, I think it can be very effective for the citizens of our county.
I agree.
Okay. Further discussion, comments from the public? Yes, ma'am?
I see a couple logistical issues.
Okay.
Um, and I am for having it at the beginning, but, um, if you say, okay, fifteen minutes is gonna be set aside for that and nobody shows up, you've got fifteen minutes where you're just sitting there and, and that's, and we waste enough time.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't-
The other thing is, let me just-
Go ahead, sorry.
And then the other thing is you just said, we need to listen. A lot of times, a lot of times that public comment comes in the form of questions. I wanna know why you're doing this. I wanna know why you're doing that. Well, that now is not a public comment. That's, that's back and forth. Just logistical issues.
Yeah, I, I agree and I, I know that's Commissioner Prince's concern. My, my rebuttal to that would be if there was nobody there, then we make a phone call like we do anyway. We call the first person, say we're ahead of schedule. Can you come in? If not, we go to the next one. I don't see that being a big problem because we're doing it now in kind of a loose form. I look at Brenda because she's the one that makes those phone calls. Yes, sir?
You are opening yourself up to, I'll take my fifteen minutes, he's gonna take my fifteen minutes.
Great point. Yeah, let me address that because we have, we mentioned this at our last meeting that, uh, as the chair, I would probably say, okay, we're in this fifteen minute period of public comment. Everybody that's interested in having public comment, indicate that to us. Okay, there's three of you, so we're gonna limit five minutes apiece. If there's six of you, you get two minutes. That's how we would kinda do that. You're exactly right though. If we did not do that, everybody'd want that fifteen minutes. Or, you know, one side would want a twelve minutes and give another side of the argument three minutes and, and that's the chair's responsibility to manage that uh, situation. So it's a great point. Thank, thank you. Other comment? And it will be a thing in progress. It'll be a works in progress. We may have to tweak it a little bit, but I agree with the basic philosophy that I don't wanna have to come to a meeting and sit there for two hours and be treated like poor relation because they know I'm gonna bark at them. They need, our citizens need to be able to have a time where they can say, and maybe we say, this is not a question and answer period. If you have a comment, have at it, but we're not gonna get into this. You wanna know why we did this or? I have a concern about the reasoning why the commissioners did something, but again, I think we need to go back and say it's not gonna be a big dialogue thing. I don't know, but, uh-
Let's try and see how it works.
Further discussion, comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of modifying the agenda to add staff or public comment prior to staff reports, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Posed nay, motion carries. Uh, ma'am, will you facilitate that please from this day forward? Thank you. Uh, we'll move on. Um, phones for the remote meeting locations. Commissioner Prince, would you like to take the lead?
I'd be happy to. Um, the question came up and I kinda followed up on it when I learned that, uh, Commissioner Kanda would like to call into this meeting. So I inquired about, do we have phone capabilities to allow that to happen? And of course, it happened, could happen on many different kind of meetings that take place where someone wants to be in a phone facility. So, um, I kinda asked around and Ms. Brenda and, um, uh, Vernon Roth, the gentleman you met earlier, uh, agreed to work this out for today. But I'm thinking we really need to have a, a, a better solution in terms of, I understand that that phone came from the courthouse. You know, so I think we ought to have a phone made for this because that's really not made for this. You can tell we have a volume issue. But they make phones and we've used them before that will allow comments to be heard better. So I just would recommend that we leave that cord down here, we buy a cord and when there's a meeting that needs it, we can run the cord out here. But I think we should buy the proper phone to allow for remote meetings. And if we have, for example, if we have a remote meeting at the same Isabel Lodge, uh, we could bring that phone over there for that meeting too.
Correct.
So, just a thought.
Yep. No, I think it's a good thought. Uh, your thoughts, Commissioner Kanda?
Yeah, I agree. And in fact, we need it in the West Cliff as well because we have meetings in the courtroom and other places. And we get contractors or, uh, whether entities in to speak to us and that, that would like to speak to us over the phone because they can't make the meeting. So I think it's necessary and I think we oughta, and if it's whatever, whatever it takes, we oughta kind of have our, uh, researches. Let's figure out what the cost is for the right equipment. And I, I, I think it's a great idea to be able to roll with the, the correct phone and maybe we have one permanently up in West Cliff. Up in different areas, for the different areas to go to there too. So I think it's worth the investment.
Yeah, I agree. I think we can handle that through our maintenance and repair budget with buildings. I don't, I would like to see us look at a general consent, uh, on this item, but I wanna take comments from the public real quick. Yes, ma'am? Or did somebody have a question? Sorry, sir?
One thing you might consider is a conference line, uh, where you have a call in number to where multiple people could call in and then you just open up a conference line, uh, to that call in group.
Okay.
So that you have multiples on that.
Yeah, that's a, that would be a good idea in addition, but we still need the, uh, sure right phone as well.
Yeah. Well, I think we'll sicko Mr. Tallpockets on that and get-
I agree.
Mr. Vernon Hill.
He and I had, when we were talking about this, we had just discussed a voice line, uh, voice over internet. And, um, so I think that might be a consideration that we do too if we have internet access or whatever. But I know San Isabel probably doesn't-
Yeah, okay. All right, well-
I need a hard line.
With the commissioner's consent between Brenda, myself and Vernon, uh, we will move forward with this. If you're okay with that, Commissioner Kanda?
Yep, I'm good.
Commissioner Prince?
I'm fine with it.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, next item on the agenda is, yeah, the contract proposal for VSO services from Roger Watkins. Uh, we have been provided a document to look at. I believe, uh, Counselor Smith has also looked at this document. Is that correct?
I didn't. I asked Donna some questions about how we paid the VSO. So I'm, I'm satisfied. This would be appropriate.
Okay. Uh, I spoke with our finance officer as well, actually this morning about this. Um, so I just, I'm struggling a little here. I think we're, we find ourselves in this uh, time of uncertainty about what's happening with the VSO office. I do believe that we need to provide uh, services to our veterans through that office. Um, there's no sense beating around the bush. I'm concerned about this and that is getting into a long-term interim thing that ends up costing us more money than it would be if we hired somebody full-time. Uh, we experienced that recently. Interim kept going on and on and on. And next thing you know, our interim transitional period was almost a year and it cost us some money. Uh, I'm not saying it wasn't valuable. I'm just saying it cost us some money. So, uh, I don't-
I'll, I'll, let me pile onto that.
Okay.
I agree. I'm concerned, uh, twenty-five bucks an hour sounds cheap, but it is, uh, twenty-five bucks an hour is a thousand bucks a week. Uh, I'll bet our VSO guy's not making that, uh, per month, you know, if you added up. And so where do you, how do you control that? So, uh, maybe the answer is I think we do need someone and maybe this guy's the right guy. Maybe twenty-five bucks an hour is okay, but you limit the hours and you limit the time that we allow it to happen until, uh, you know, we redo it. It, in, in other words, some ways to control it, uh, would be necessary in my view. And I'm just, those are just some suggestions. I'm not-
Right. No, I agree with you, Commissioner Kanda. I, I don't think the intent of this and, and Attorney Smith, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think the intent of this was to be a forty hour a week position on a part-time basis. Do you?
No, I asked Donna that. She said he was contemplating working about two days a week and not necessarily eight hours on those days.
That, that's true. I, I understood that Clint, but my problem is, you know, uh, it's up to him to decide how many hours he spends on any one thing and whether he gets it done. And I know there'll be rushes, you know, there are issues. If, if he had a run on some things he had to do, it could add up. I don't think it'll ever be forty hours a week, three, four weeks a month. I'm just saying it is an expensive deal. And, uh, we shouldn't let it exceed what we currently pay, uh, the VSO, uh, anyway. But maybe there's a way to handle that.
Yeah, and our reimbursement schedule from the state is going to be different, uh, as, from a full-time position to a part-time position. So our costs are gonna go up and the state's costs are gonna go down, uh, if it's a part-time or an interim position. I don't know which is the appropriate word here. But I think as budget officers, we need to say eventually we're gonna al- uh, allow this up to so many hours a week. And, and I see it's in here, but the two ten-hour days each week, I don't, I just don't know. I'm throwing that out for discussion.
If, if I may, sir, I, I'd like to put in there, shall work no more than two ten-hour days each week. That's five hundred dollars. This, of course, is precipitated because Tim Schwartz, our VSO officer, is ill. Um, has, has been off for a while and maybe off, we don't know. He, he may be off for some additional time. My feeling is this is a nominal fee to pay for our veterans that need the services and I would be very remiss if we did not have a VSO officer available to our vet, excuse me, to our veterans on a continuous basis during, uh, Mr. Schwartz's absence. So I would like to just change the term of this agreement to say no more than two ten-hour days per week at the twenty-five dollars an hour. And then I would recommend that we go ahead and we implement this ASAP so we can continue our services to our veterans.
And I guess a thought, a follow-up thought to your comments, Jay, or sorry, Commissioner Prince is, could, could we just say not to exceed twenty hours a week?
That's fine.
He might wanna come three days a week. He might need to come that fourth day. If we say two ten-hour days and a guy needs service on that third, you know what I'm saying?
I don't have any issue. Yeah, I just wanna limit it to twenty hours a week. But I'd also say if he came to me or he came to the commissioners and said, look, I have veterans that need help and I need to increase this, so-
Right.
I would be, I'm gonna tell you, as long as he's diligent, I, it's gonna be very hard pressed for me not to increase his hours if it's needed to service our veterans. I'll just tell you that now.
Hey, there's one other thing we could consider. I agree with that, sir, is, uh, rather than calling it part-time to the state or something, maybe there's a way and we'd have to deal with the state to make this a quote, full-time position that he's filling in order to get the full-time money, which is probably twenty hours a week, whatever it is. Uh, maybe there's a way to do that so we're not losing the, uh, like, like you pointed out, Tom.
Right.
We'd need to put-
Yeah.
Mr. Schwartz on the disabled list, whatever the proper term is. And then we could fill the position in the interim as a state, with the state agency. And then if Mr. Schwartz decides he can't come back, um, then we can transition back into that.
That, that, that's right.
Yeah, I understand that Zachary's saying, and I agree.
My conversation, um, has been that this gentleman is not interested in a full-time position right now. Uh, and I think the state would say it's gotta be forty hours a week for us to continue our full-time reimbursement. So they'll still reimburse us. It's just at a prorated, uh, rate. I looked at those figures this morning based on, uh, the twenty-five dollar an hour, the five hundred dollars, uh, total amount. So I, I just, I'm all about trying to put some closed end to this so that we, that we don't end up paying twenty-five dollars an hour for sixty-five hours a week. You know, that's, we just don't need to go there. So if, uh, counselor, if, if you think we're okay to change the wording and then move forward, I don't know that he would not accept it. I mean, it's basically the same hours and the same pay rate. It, we're just not saying you have to do it all in two days. You think that's reasonable?
No, that's fine. We can certainly say that the contract is acceptable, except we want to limit it to twenty hours per week. Not any specific days or hours per day.
Um, Chair would entertain a motion to such if you still feel compelled?
I'll go ahead and I'll move that we accept the contract for the ECU services. With, with the, provided that, um, uh, we can make the change to, uh, a maximum of twenty hours per week.
I'll second that. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to, uh, present the contract for these services, including the wording not to exceed twenty hours per week. Discussion? I have a question because if I walked out of here and somebody asked me this, I'd look like a fool. What does ECU stand for? I have not seen that.
That was my question too.
Okay. Um, and I, I just don't know that. I've not seen that in any documentation. It's not the name of the company, Nexus Consulting Group. So I don't know. That may be some- Pardon me?
How, how is it?
It says at the top of the contract, a contract for ECU services. That may be a VSO term. I just don't know that. I'm not.
Boy, that, that's a good one. I've never heard that.
Yeah, and maybe we can find that out as we move along.
Well, I just Googled it. It's East Carolina University.
Nice, alright. Yes, ma'am.
How does that money and time compare to what Tim was getting?
Uh, that's a good question. I don't, I didn't bring those, that file with me today. Uh, if, if I start throwing out numbers, I'd be off by a factor of a hundred, but I think, uh, on a, on a thirty-four thousand dollar salary, let's say, I don't believe that's exactly what he's making, but on a thirty-four thousand dollar salary, I believe that the state reimburses us about, uh, nineteen thousand, something like that, just a little over half. If we do this on a part-time thing, if that thirty-four thousand held true, which it wouldn't because that'd be full-time, but as comparative analysis, the reimbursement would drop down to around thirteen or fourteen thousand. So it's about a three or four thousand dollar difference between going part-time and full-time. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Would it be appropriate to consult with Mr. Schwartz and get his opinion on, uh?
Well, he's given his opinion to our finance officer and she worked up those numbers based on her conversation with him. That's what she told me this morning. Uh, certainly, we know this, but the general public may not. This is at Tim Schwartz's suggestion that we enter into. He loves this guy. I've met him several times. He's met with the commissioners as well. Uh, very qualified. I think he's a perfect answer to our problem right now. And that's, this is all really stemmed from Tim Schwartz. So he's had his input on that.
So we don't really know for sure if it's gonna cost us more money for part-time than for full-time, plus the county.
Great question. If we use the part-time position as full-time, it's gonna cost us more money. No question. Yeah.
And has, has, have the gods at the, at the federal level approved all of this?
Uh, the state, yes.
Whoever does that.
Tim has talked to them and this is what they recommend we do, given the circumstances right now. But if we treat this part-time, that's where I was really getting at. Is if we treat this part, if we use this part-time position and treat it as full-time, it's gonna cost us money. No question.
But just a caveat to that is we don't pay any benefits, which usually incur more than ten percent of your salary as benefits. So it's a, it's not quite as bad as it seems.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think we're talking three or four thousand dollars.
But we're talking about our veterans.
Tim, Tim doesn't take any benefits from the county, so.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Tim doesn't take any benefits from the county.
He doesn't.
No, he has his veterans' benefit.
It's in the budget that he receives forty-one hundred dollars worth of benefits. It's in the budget for that. Now, he may not take it.
Yeah, no, I think it's budgeted for whoever might be in that position.
Gotcha.
But he does not avail himself. But he does not avail himself to those benefits, because he has veterans' services benefits.
Okay.
Yeah, Mrs. Hawby-
Saving it either way.
Wanted to make sure I understood and that I conveyed that this morning, that, uh, this is one of those rare circumstances, if we don't manage it properly, less is gonna cost us more. That was her words, exactly, and that's all I'm saying, is I think we need to be aware of that, and not let this kinda take on a life of its own, like we've experienced in the last six or eight months, and, and, uh, so I think if we manage it appropriately, we'll be fine.
Do we need to put a time limit?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't know about that, I mean, we don't know about that.
So it doesn't turn out to be a year from now?
Well, we don't know, if we knew when or if Mr. Schwartz comes back, we could do that. You know, he had mentioned to us in a public meeting, so I'm not giving anything away, that he's interested in moving. His house is for sale, he told us he, so, his health is the real issue at the moment, and then he may turn around and move right away. So, uh, your point's well taken, but I don't know if we can answer the question.
The only answer I could give you is, it's in this contract, that either party may terminate this contract within thirty days. So, if we see that it's getting out of control, we terminate the contract and go look somewhere else. Yeah.
Right.
Okay, good, um, so of course, I was busy listening and not writing down, but I believe we have a motion in a second to enter into this contract with, uh, with the change of not to exceed twenty hours per week at the rate of twenty-five dollars an hour. Further discussion or public from the comment, comment from the public? One of those morning, hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose nay, motion carries. Uh, we will forward this back to, uh...
Nexus.
Yeah, should we make the changes in this and send it back, or send it back and ask him to make the changes, or?
I'll go through Donna, I'll make the changes and, and ask her to communicate with him on it.
Alright, thank you, appreciate that. Public comment? Yes, ma'am?
That was a perfect example, that discussion of, of what I wanted to say about when you have a, a topic on your agenda, and you have a crowd like this, it would be really nice for me especially, I don't know about the rest of you, to have a brief summary of what it is you're talking about. I had to discern be t- be, uh, amongst your discussion of what exactly are you talking about? Now, it would've been nice to know, and I already knew that Tim had been ill, and this has been presented, what kind of contract, and where did it come from, and that Tim had already known about it, and he suggested it, just as an example, to help the, the public understand what you're talking about. Just a brief summary of that agenda item.
Are, are you referring to like a verbal, we're about to take on the discussion about a contract, and then just give a quick history of what it is we're doing and why we would be discussing it?
Exactly.
Okay, I got you, I think that's certainly reasonable.
Um, it's hard in public comment not to respond, which we just said we were gonna probably not do that much, but...
Well, but what did, did you ask him?
For a summary, not, not...
What?
You could add it to the agendas.
Right, he had to gather that from their discussion.
Yeah, I mean, we probably all sat in meetings and experienced the same thing that you guys are experiencing.
What are you talking about?
Unfortunately, that's not how county government is ran. You're here to observe, whether you understand or not is not our responsibility necessarily, um...
But your decisions are based on our knowledge of what you're doing.
Not necessarily, it could be, but not necessarily, that, that wasn't a public decision. We made that decision, uh, after hearing from the public, possibly, or maybe not. But, the other thing is, it's hard when, when we as commissioners have been criticized for having such long, drawn-out meetings, to spend four or five minutes explaining what we're getting ready to deal with, every item on this agenda, today, very short agenda. I understand what you're saying, I've sat there and thought, what the hell are they talking about? What's so secretive that these guys are looking at it, and the rest of us doesn't get to look at that? I don't know what the answer to that is. Commissioner Canada, or Prince, sorry, then we'll go to Commissioner Canada.
Um, with the utmost respect, I don't agree.
Okay.
I think our constituency needs to know everything we do, and anytime we do something where they're going, what is this about, I have no idea, we're basically working in a vacuum, the one thing we all promised we would never do. I think the comment is well taken, um, in other town, like town meetings, we do that. I grant you it'll add some time, but I think the public must know what we're talking about, must know what we're discussing, and must know what we're voting on, and if they choose not to come, most of, well, except when we come down here or go to San Isabel, they could watch it online, but I don't want ever someone to sit there and go, what are these guys doing, and why are they doing it? I, I, I just feel it's respectfully a disagree.
Okay.
I think we should.
Certainly appreciate that. Yes, sir, Mr. Canada?
Uh, yeah, uh, I agree, uh, we do need to-
Now wait, him and I disagree, so who are you agreeing with?
I, I'm going to say I agree, that we do need to be totally transparent, that's true. And, uh, we, but I think we need to be more efficient, we can be more efficient in how, uh, how we, uh, we, we tend to dwell a lot on repeating the same thing over and over again, and, you know, I, I, I particularly got the flavor of that, sit on a telephone, listening, a little bit different than being there in person. And we tend to, because we're in person, we speak to the audience, uh, because they're there. And, uh, and so we wanna do the best we can, and our audience is always our boss, is, uh, our constituency. And, uh, Jay made a good point, if they wanna look it up online, they sure are welcome, and they are do that, uh, capability. So I think, uh, I think we just gotta keep trying to, to, uh, do the best we can to make it as efficient as we can, because it is awful tough to sit through a, a very long meeting and hear the same thing over and over again. And, but we need to be careful, and we gotta be respectful, and, uh, do it the time thing we can.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes, sir?
As she was saying, kind of, when you started out a subject like, uh, RETAC?
RETAC, yes, sir.
Or VSO? A lot of people don't know what that means.
Sure.
Might throw that on as long you're talking about.
Yeah.
I knew what it was, but a lot of people might not know what it was.
Exactly, uh, and we get inundated with these acronyms, and so maybe we need to be careful about that.
Like the one you did at the top of that message?
ECU.
ECU, whatever it is?
Right, yeah.
You're pretty into it.
And that's why when we, I'm sorry, I had a bit of trouble. Uh, and that's why when I started the discussion, I explained about Mr. Schwartz and why we're even having this discussion, and, and I did that not for our benefit, we know, I did it for the audience to understand what it was. I apologize for interrupting you.
You know, there's a fine line, and, and while I agree with Cindy and, and completely, 'cause I've been there, too, um, but on the other hand, there are some of these topics that have gone on for months and months and months, and, and there's no way to bring a citizen that's new into the room up to speed every single time. That's what, that's what minutes are for. You know, there's a fine line between you guys accommodating the citizens and the citizens doing their homework. You know, as being in, you know, in these meetings every single time-
That's a good point.
There is a, there, there is a lot that goes on, that if you're new in the room, you won't get. But, but you gotta find the fine line between citizens doing their homework-
Right.
-and you guys accommodating that.
Yeah.
I don't know what the, where the balance is.
It's a great point, and I'll tell you, this whole topic is gonna rear its ugly head even worse when we get to the budget time, because not everybody's gonna be privy to everything that's discussed. They can sit there and listen to it all, but doesn't mean they're gonna understand or to put it in context.
Just like you said, it's all online, right?
It, it is.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, the preliminary budget is even online, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Mrs. Flower?
I, I mean, for a ten or fifteen-minute introduction for each item, I can just say like a two-minute, uh, summary of what has happened and what's going on, and what you're about to discuss. I think that that, that two minutes, or three minutes even, would be plenty of time to help the, to help the group to understand what's going on, not the whole history, but just a summary.
Okay. Uh, your, your comments are not falling on deaf ears by any means, I, I get it. Uh, I've also been criticized as a chair, uh, unreasonably, I might add, but nonetheless.
You watered that tone.
A person came to me and said, now wait a minute, you guys have these discussions on any given item of business, and right before you vote, you ask a public comment, you're gonna tell me that public comment is gonna change the way you're gonna vote? So I can't speak for anyone else, but if you made a compelling argument, I guess it would. They felt like they should be able to debate throughout the entire agenda item, see? And, so, there has to be some balance, I get that, we can't just ignore all of you, um... Commissioner meetings aren't designed to be performed to the public, they're designed for us three to sit here and do business, and if we choose to look up and recognize that you're even here, I guess that's one thing. But that's not how I would choose to be a county commissioner, I like this, but then I get yelled at for why in the hell did your meeting take three hours, or three and a half, or two and a half hours and forty-five minutes? I don't really care how long the meetings go, myself, but I do believe that all three commissioners are committed to transparency, honesty, and forthrightness. That takes time for those three things to occur, in my opinion, you can't just glaze over things. If it takes additional time to say, okay, we're gonna talk about a contract with our VSO guy, because he's out sick, and we need to find somebody to replace him, this is what we're talking about, and move on, I could see that being reasonable.
I think that's fine, even two minutes.
No, so...
That's a great summary, it took us a minute.
Yeah, yes.
I never wanna be rushed through a meeting. If the meeting lasts till two in the afternoon, or even later, if we have business to conduct, I wanna make sure that every item gets the full attention that it needs, without going, oh, let's just move on, this is not an important thing. So, I, I understand it's, it's arduous to sit here for three hours and discuss stuff that may have been discussed since we started, but that's our job, and I think we need to do this to the best of our ability on however long it takes.
Uh, I enjoy this way more than I enjoy sitting in that office with just Brenda and myself. This is the fun part for me, to be able to have this interaction and get a feedback. Somebody had a comment, yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to say that this is the first county commissioner meeting that I've attended since you guys, this, this board. I attended county commissioner meetings with the last board, and honestly, it was very uncomfortable. Um, there was this tension between the county commissioners. I've not met Commissioner Canada, but from what I've seen, you guys are working great together, you're polite to each other, um, and I just wanna commend you on that.
Well, thank you.
The, the meetings before, for me as a constituent, was, was very, very uncomfortable.
As was it for me, I sat in some of those meetings as well, nobody can attest to that more than the gentleman to my right.
I said, I also.
I didn't like them at all.
You took more than, more grunt than you should have.
Well, thank you, that's very gracious of you to-
You're very gracious about it, so, anyway, I, I will be back.
Good, thank you, very complimentary, and I think Commissioner Prince and I would agree that, even though you haven't met Mr. Canada, he is definitely the most contentious of the bunch, so probably just as well that he's not here.
I hear ya.
Yeah, well, um, you know, not to make mockery, but we have amongst the three of us said, you know, we need to enjoy this, and we need to be able to have fun, and, and we need to be able to take opposite sides, and we always try to say respectfully, but we know that without even saying it, but, uh, we just, we just don't wanna go down some dark road where we can't, I'm not gonna say what I truly feel, 'cause I know he's not gonna agree, that, that doesn't fly, that's no way to run county government. So I think we all three enjoy, uh, enjoy our jobs, and we wanna have an enjoyable work environment, which this is, for me. So thank you, I appreciate it, yes?
I appreciate it, too.
I, I'm just wanting to say that I, in my opinion, this board is, uh, acting as a steward, I guess, you could say, a steward of our money, and of our opinions, and of the way that we would like the county to be run. And so, to, to know that we're important enough to at least just give a summary of what you're talking about, is just re- being respectful to the people who put you into that office.
Good point, good point.
And I'd like to add, since I'm sitting here, three hundred dollars an hour, you just take all the time you want.
Yeah, you're- You like them four or five-hour meetings, sir.
I wish, three hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
That is really not true.
Uh, Commissioner Canada and I took office on November twenty-second, we were sworn in that day, and our meeting was five hours long. So it was a grind, but, uh, I, I agree a hundred percent. I, I get paid to do this and to do work in the county, I don't care how long this takes. If, if there were people that had something that they wanted to say, and they weren't afforded that opportunity, then, then we're cheating our citizens or our counties, so. Uh, I, believe me, Commissioner Canada, I appreciate what you say, I should call in probably, because I am the worst at repeating everything, um, that comes from dealing with most of your adult life with high school kids, it'll make you repeat stuff, uh, 'cause they just don't listen, no, I'm teasing. All right, anything else, sir, for the good of the order, thank you for your patience?
I'm good, and I agree, I really appreciate, uh, everybody's comments as well, and, and I think, uh, what we try to do is, uh, give the, uh, always, we give the, uh, our constituents and the public that is there in our meetings the opportunity to speak, even though, uh, we do talk to each other about the business, and sometimes we, we think you know it, uh, we, uh, always invite you to inter, you know, interrupt and take public time, and question, so we can, we can amplify and, and, uh, clarify the issues, so, and we're getting better and, uh, being more efficient, and we're gonna be better as we go along. And I agree, uh, with the public, uh, you know, if you come, you know, and you don't know something, ask it, uh, research it if you can beforehand, it, it helps us learn as well, so thanks.
You bet, thank you, sir, okay, uh, any further public comment? Yes?
Yeah, I would like to thank, uh, County Services for their recent events in the county, their handling of the, very, very-
Good, thank you, thank you, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's times like this when you gotta know that it's all about the county, it's not about that valley, that's for darn sure, so, um... Okay, anything else? Hearing none?
Will you adjourn?
Thank you, uh, I'll second, been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries, we need to adjourn. Thank you, guys, pardon?
Too early.
Too early, oh, God.
I applaud Wexmore for getting this kind of turnout.
Yeah, isn't that nice?